Good morning, everybody. In accordance with Section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new lots. We got a little bit of feedback. Testing, testing. Looks like we resolved it. Great. Okay. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga, the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississauga, the Credit. I'd also like to acknowledge our Toronto Blue Jays, which made it to the World Series after thirty-two years. So we'll be looking forward to that. Go Blue Jays. Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually have registered in advance and will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We also ask you to mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held during the time your camera will be enabled. You'll only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during your video appearance. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the Committee. For the procedure today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. We will deal with the deferral requests first, and then go through the items as an order. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the Committee does not require a presentation, the applicant is to advise the Chair if they wish to speak to the Committee. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching your five-minute mark. Any presentations or other material you wish to submit to the Committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and Committee members cannot accept material at the hearing. When addressing the Committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the materials outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first. They'll make a presentation to the Committee. The Committee won't entertain proposals or revisions... Sorry. They will not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. And if an applicant does come with substantial revisions, we may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, or to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of those changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak, and generally, we call in speakers in the hearing room first, and then those online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the other speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into Committee for a decision. Okay. Before we get to our morning session, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I believe we have some minutes to adopt from our previous sessions?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Through you, we have two sets of minutes. We'll start with our August twenty-eight minutes. Present was Mr. Allison, Mr. Neffel, Mr. Marzari, Mr. Bartolo, and Mr. Kubo.
All right. Do I have a motion? Yes, Mr. Fazelli?
Through Mr. Chair, I forward a motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Marzari. All in favor? Okay. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our second set of minutes to approve is from our September eleventh minutes. Present was Ms. Casson, Ms. Martin, Mr. Fazelli, Mr. Marzari, and Ms. Sankar Peralta.
All right. Do I have a motion? Ms. Sekar?
I motion to approve those minutes.
I have a second. Mr. Marzari. All in favor? That's unanimous. Those minutes are adopted. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have one file to close today. The address is eighty-five Newton. The application has been withdrawn. The file number is A zero one three eight dash twenty-five NY.
All right. Do we have a motion? Close that file? Yes, Mr. Fazelli?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to forward a motion to request to close the file.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Marzari. All in favor? Okay. That's unanimous. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I believe there are some words you wanted to say.
Did you want to just go through the conflicts first?
Sure. Yes. We have any conflicts for the morning session of staff or of members? Any conflicts? All right. No conflicts this morning? Yes, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Thank you very much. I just want to say a couple of words before we start. With the recent Canada Post labor disruption, the City of Toronto was able to continue with our Committee of Adjustment public hearings. We were able to do so because of the recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act to modernize public notice requirements, which enabled municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance and consent applications. Committee staff continued to ensure public notification of upcoming hearings in accordance with the Planning Act and its regulations. This included publishing hearing notices in the Toronto Star and the City of Toronto website, and posting links to the agendas and application information on our webpages, and provided notice through the city's various social media channels. Additionally, the Committee of Adjustment continued to ensure that a public hearing notice sign was posted on the property in advance of the hearing.
All right. Thank you. We have some deferral requests this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do. Why don't we start? We have two. Number two and number ten. Why don't we start with number two, which is a consent, and the address is fifty-five Florence Avenue?
All right. Application for... Application number two. Fifty-five Florence Avenue. The purpose of the application is to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. It would require a number of variances. Part one, eve projection, front yard soft landscaping, lot coverage, side main wall height, number of stories, main entrance height, rear deck balcony area, front yard landscaping, and east and west side yard setbacks. For part two, platform encroachment into a front yard setback, eve projection, lot coverage, side main wall height, pedestrian entrance height, and east side yard setback. On file, we've got material from the applicant, a memo from community planning, and a memo from development engineering. We have our agent or applicant with us.
And Committee members. This is Faras Puyende. My address is one oh five Harrison Garden Boulevard.
All right, sir. And what is the reason for your deferral request today?
You know, during negotiation with the planning department, we have noticed that there are two more variances for part B, and we didn't have enough time to revise the public notice for those two variances. And based on that, we need... I would like to request for deferral for next available session for our application.
All right. Very well. Just to confirm, there's no speakers for this item in the gallery? Okay. None. All right. Let's take this into Committee. Yes, Mr. Fazelli? Oh, Mr. Marzari. I'm sorry.
Problem. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks. I'd like to put forward a motion to defer this application so the applicant can include the two missing variances.
All right. Do I have a second? Yes. Mr. Fazelli. All in favor? All right. That deferral request is approved. All right. Moving along? Yes. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our second deferral item is number ten. File number A zero three seven seven, and the address is eighty-nine points.
All right. Item number ten, eighty-nine Pontes Avenue. The purpose of the application is to legalize and maintain the existing two-story detached dwelling. Two variances for building length and lot coverage. On file, material from the applicant. We have our agent with us.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We don't have the applicant online at this moment. If you don't mind, we'll stand it down, and we'll move straight into the agenda.
All right. Very good. Okay. We are starting with item number one, thirty-three eighty-eight Bathurst Street, and two, Cadive Avenue. The purpose of the application is for consent. It's a consent application. We have on file material from the applicant, as well as an email from a community planning. Welcome, sir. Good morning. So just based on my review of the file, my understanding is this was an approval that kind of expired, and you guys are back.
Mr. Chair, can we just get the name and...
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Your name and address, please.
Yeah. It's Michael Plant, and I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant. My home address, did you want, or...?
Your work address or home address? Just...
Sure. Two one seven one Avenue Road in Toronto, Suite two hundred.
All right. Maybe you could just give us a few words as to why you're here today?
Thank you. So just as you were saying, the application was granted back in twenty nineteen, and consent was given subject to a few conditions. One of those conditions involved conveying part three on the registered reference plan to the city. However, part three has an easement running along it that benefits a few other pieces of land, so it isn't within the registered owner's... or it wasn't within the registered owner's ability to convey that parcel without also obtaining consent from all of those other property owners. I understand from recent correspondence that the condition has been updated to only convey part four to the city, which is located... which doesn't have an easement running along it. It's completely separate from part three. And based on my understanding, all of the conditions that have been set out in correspondence with the city have been satisfied. So again, we're requesting consent to sever the two pieces of land. There are two distinct municipal addresses, thirty-three eighty-eight Bathurst and two Cadive.
Can I just confirm as well? With the consent, there are no variances that would be required with this consent, aside from the consent itself?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And you have reviewed the comments from community planning staff?
Yes.
There were some standard conditions in an email dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five?
October... I have from August an email, but I...
We'll have staff just pull up the comments from community planning. I just want to make sure that you've seen the email there. Yes. And as well, there's some comments from engineering.
Right. I believe the engineering's comments were... that they've given their approval.
Okay. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they'd like a formal presentation on this. I'm seeing... seeing... I don't see anybody. If it's all right with you, it looks like we can move into Committee for a decision?
Sure.
All right. All right. Let's take this into Committee.
All right. Mr. Chair, sorry. Before you begin, I apologize. The engineering memo still lists conditions.
Yes. Yes, we do see that.
Just to clarify. Would you like us to put it up?
Yeah. Staff can put that up on the screen. Actually, I'm just very briefly going to pull this out of Committee. I just want to confirm with the applicant, you have seen the two...
It's a little hard for me to see that.
Okay.
Do you mind just speaking to what the conditions are?
Well, staff are going to pull them right up on the screen. I want you to take a look at them. You can go up and take a look, but just reserve any comment until you get back to the podium. Yes. Okay.
So we have seen that. I believe the conditions are referring to the reference plan, and they refer to it as a draft. The reference plan that...
Hold on. I'm going to stop you there. I just want to confirm that you're aware of the conditions, that you don't have any concern or issue with them that would prompt further discussion?
Mr. Chair, you're technically in Committee. I interrupted you. Did you? Okay.
I did, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that you've had an opportunity to read the conditions and that there's nothing that is of a concern with those conditions. They're pretty standard, but we do want to make sure that the agent or applicant is aware of them. Okay. I'll do a quick read for it. Yeah. Take... Yeah, of course. Take your time. And it is in... It is on the... It is in our package and on the public portal. Yep. And... Right? No, I'm going to have them pull up the community planning comments next. Just give you an opportunity just to look at those. Yeah. I'll just... So I'd just ask you again, and I'd just ask you to go back to the podium just so we capture it on our audio. Sure. Any concerns with the recommendations from development engineering or community planning?
No.
Okay. Thanks. All right. I'm going to take us back into Committee now, members. Yes, Mr. Marzari?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any difficulty with this application. I think it's straightforward, missed the four tests. So I'd like to put forward a motion to approve this application subject to engineering condition and also standard community planning condition for standard severance application.
All right. Do I have a second? Yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta. All in favor? All right. That's unanimous. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much. Can you just confirm that we'll be provided with a copy of the approval? How does that...
Yes. Staff will... Actually, staff will be able to best answer that question. You can head over to our Deputy Secretary Treasurer and ask him. He'll confirm it. But they will provide a copy of the approval as well.
Okay.
Which you can forward to your examiner.
Sure. Okay. And where is that? Where do I... Oh, over there. Okay. Thank you.
Well, staff will best answer that for you. Okay?
Thanks again.
Of course. All right. Item number...
Mr. Chair, we have item number ten. We have the applicant on.
Oh, item number ten. Okay. So item number ten, eighty-nine Pontes Avenue. Purpose of the application is to legalize and maintain the existing two-story detached dwelling. Two variances for building length and lot coverage. On file material from the applicant.
Yep. It's Andrew Trotter, eighty-one St. Clarence Avenue, Toronto. I am the agent designer.
And the reason for your deferral request today, sir?
Well, actually, I mean, the staff at North York wanted me... They asked me to deferral. I don't want to defer this. It's a tiny, miniscule application for a little bit extra length that was a mistake on a survey. The house is built... It was built like seven years ago.
I'm going to stop you there. I'm going to stop you there. That's fine. That is your choice. But I'm going to... We're going to... We will get to this item. We'll put it back in the regular order on our agenda, and when we get to it, we can address the reason why you don't want to deferral. But if you don't want to deferral right now, we're going to stick to our agenda order. So just hang in there, okay?
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Okay. So item number two was deferred. So we're on to item number three. Three sixty-nine Comer Avenue. The purpose of this application... This is another consent application, requiring some variances. For part one, we're looking at lot area, lot frontage, building length, and angular plane penetration as well for lot part two. We're looking at lot area, lot frontage, building length, and angular plane penetration. Again, on file material from the applicant, a report from community planning, a memo from urban forestry, as well as our deferred package material. We've got our agent in person? No. We have our agent online?
The planner of urban congruence. I'm the RPP. I come here on behalf of the owner of this property.
Hold on. Can we just get your name and address? We got cut off at the beginning there.
Oh, sorry. Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Cindy Lee. I'm the planner of urban congruence. I come here on behalf of the owner of this property, Xiao Yi Liu. I'm the RPP, and my address is three seven one Featherington Road, Richmond Hill.
All right. We will ask you for a presentation on the application. You've got five minutes. I've got staff to put the five minutes up on the screen, and whenever you're ready.
Yeah. Before that, can I correct one item you just said in the introduction? Actually, we only have two items for...
Okay.
We have the new... So the angular plan penetration is removed from the Zongying Bai Lao, so we don't have that item now. We only have two items on each side, on each lot.
Okay. So let's pull up the public notice. Staff are going to pull that up. I just would like to... Just to confirm. So looking at part one and part two, just to confirm, there's two variances for each required now. The rest of variances have been removed. And just to confirm, those variances are for the lot area and lot frontage only. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Very well. Okay. Whenever you're ready, and staff... We have received your presentation. Staff will... We've got that up on the screen, and whenever you're ready.
Yeah. I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So I can speak now, right?
Yes.
We propose to sever the existing lot vertically to convert it into two lots. After last hearing, we improved the proposal. There will be only two items for MV. The requirement minimum lot area will be reduced from six hundred to five, six, seven point nine... point eight two square meter, and the required minimum lot frontage will be reduced from fifteen to nine point seven five meter per lot. Next. Next page. On this map, we can see the site is an idle location for identification in the urban context. Next. In our proposal, three units on each lots are proposed. There is no archaeological, urban design, forestry, and engineering concerns. Next. The first test, the land use destination of the site will keep as neighborhood. The patterns of the streets and blocks will be remained. Next. The proposed building size, mapping scale, density, and drawing type are similar to the nearby residential properties. The proposed buildings locate... elevation, location, elevation design, and the materials match most of the existing houses. Therefore, the general intent of the purpose of the OP is maintained. Next. The second test, all proposed building dimensions and setbacks, et cetera, comply with the requirements of the Zongying Bai Lao. Therefore, the purpose of development maintains the general intent and purpose of the Zongying Bai Lao. Next. The third test, the existing lot area is nearly twice of the requirements. The existing house is two stories lower than the requirements. The dips of the existing house is nine meter shorter than the requirements. Leaving a huge rear yard, the existing house maintained one unit. Five units less than the requirements. In short, the existing site is underdevoped. The proposal will be much better to achieve the objectives of the Zongying Bai Lao, provide five more residential units to cities' housing supply, and makes the use of the land much more sufficient. Therefore, the purpose is... The proposal is appropriate for the development of the land. Next. The fourth test, the site is one of the largest lot in the area and offers strong potential for land surveillance. The requirement minimum lot area on the opposite side is only... Opposite side of the Comer Street is only five hundred fifty square meter, which is even smaller than our proposal. The requirement required minimum lot frontage for the adjacent block is only thirteen point five meter. Therefore, the proposed development respects the existing physical character of the geographic neighborhood in terms of the lot size. Next. On the same street, much smaller lot areas and similar frontage have already been approved. Therefore, the variance requirement request is minor. Next. Next page, please. In short, the planning rationale provided above demonstrates that the two variances meet the four tests. The proposal intensification will improve the city's image of this community as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Yes. Mr. Marzari?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question from the applicant. You mentioned that the... You mentioned that there are some approvals within the same lot frontage in the neighborhood. Do you have any study? Or can you indicate the approvals, and what's the lot frontage for those approvals?
I measured, I checked from the city's website. I didn't get exactly drawing of that property, but I measured on the city's Zongying Bai Lao map online. It shows the frontage of that property is only, I think it's just around 10 meter, very similar to our proposal. I don't believe it's more than, much more than 10 meter, it's just 10 meter. This from the rough measurement from the city's website. And also, I measured their square meters, the area of that lot. It's only about 330, I think it's around that figure of that lot.
You said the square meter, but do you know, do you happen to know the number? What number on Comer Avenue is that?
It's not on the Comer Avenue. On the west side of Young Street, it's have different name of the street, but it's on the same street. You can see on this map, yeah. Only 1.8 kilometer from us. Actually, I discussed with this case with the city planner, they agree. This figure is nearly correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I also, I note that there's a community planning staff report recommending refusal. Have you had discussion with a community planning? Maybe you can speak to that?
Yeah, we have discussion before, after that last hearing, we have a discussion with the city planner. And I think the rationale is not the issue. And just because the frontage of our proposal is shorter than the existing Zongying Bai Lao. So for this reason, the director of planning department think it's still, it's a smaller size. But in our consideration, the size is not only one dimension, the size is the whole area. Our proposal, the lot area in our proposal is even bigger than just on the other side of Comer Street. Yeah, so the site, the lot site is not small. Only the shape of the site is long, very deep. So in this situation, if we don't do the land surveillance, I think the land is kind of waste. But if we do it, the frontage will be shorter. This is the case. But in, I just, what I just discussed, on the same street is already happened. I think this is a trend of the evolution of our community. The lot will, maybe the frontage too, will become smaller to provide more housing.
Did you note that there was a consent already approved on Comer?
Oh, not yet. I know, there are some other cases. But we only do the research on the resource we can have. So this what we found on the other side of Young Street. We found an precedent.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have another speaker as well. I'd like to get to, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, and good morning to the committee members and staff as well. My name is Alastair Robertson. I live at 373 Comer Avenue, which is two doors down. And my parents own the property at 371 Comer Avenue as well. I am here today to support the staff recommendation that you refuse this application on the grounds that it is, it is not a minor variance within the generally understood meaning of that term. I'd like to begin by pointing out that the applicant's making an argument based on a property on Drury. It's not in the neighborhood. Kids don't go to the same school. The Right Parents Association ends long before we get there. It has an entirely different history of zoning and development, which has been going on for the last 80 years. It's not analogous, and to claim it is, is to propose something which is unreasonable. I think the problem here with this application is that, in effect, if you approve the variances, you produce an outcome which is not minor. If the applicant wanted to build a single home with a garden suite, I don't think anyone would be thrilled about the garden suite idea, but it would be in keeping with, I think, the intent of the garden and laneway suites policy, which is to allow a reasonable intensification. If you sever these two lots, you're not creating a reasonable intensification. You're creating a ridiculous intensification for this neighborhood. And I think that the test of that is how significantly narrower the lots being proposed are, and the effect that that has on the areas. The properties in question have a semi-water course that's seasonal, that runs across the back of them as well. It's not, it's not a straightforward lot from a building perspective. And I would be concerned about the effect that that would have on the surrounding neighbors as well. But above all, I would be concerned about the neighbors' reasonable use and enjoyment of their own properties. Because of the way in which this would alter the way in which people would use their properties, and in which they would be able to enjoy them. I think that while we all acknowledge that finding ways to provide new and different housing stock is important across the city, I don't think this is the means to achieve that because instead of potentially doubling the density, according to the applicant's information, would be increasing it by five times. If we were building townhouses, and we were seeking approvals for townhouses in a neighborhood, that would be a different discussion. But to try and back this in by a severance is, I think, unreasonable.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I want to turn it back to our applicant and provide them an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that came from our immediate neighbor.
Actually, the owner of this site did so much effort to do this proposal and submit the COA application twice, spent so much time and money on all of this, it's only to want to keep this community as beautiful as cared as before. Because in reality, in R D Zone, city Zongying Bai Lao is already approved, five or six units on each lot. We can go to building department to apply for six or five units on this lot directly. We don't need to go through the planning process. We don't need to submit the application to COA. Then that gentleman will have five family or six family just beside his property as their neighbor. I think this situation is worse than what we proposed. Now, after the land surveillance, each lot is still one house, not so big with a garden suite. So beside him, only two families in the duplex house. So this will be much better condition for them, for the neighbors. And also, the image I show, our proposed elevation is so similar, you know, to the houses in front of our building. The most houses on the south side, along the south side of Comer are very dated. I don't believe those building will stay there for long time. There are only one story with siding, exterior walls. So it's not a good condition. So the city is become more concrete, right? Design style now. So I think most building on that side will have change. So I think our proposal actually benefit the neighbors. Yeah, I think otherwise, our, the owner will go to apply for five units or six units development directly to the building department.
Okay, questions? Yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta?
Sorry, I just wanted to double check. And I'm hearing all the concerns of the neighbors, and I'm hearing from the agent for the applicant that, you know, their explanations as to why this is, and thank you, they've done changes since they brought this forward the last time, and I appreciate that. But I'm still hung up on the staff report, and I still am not hearing from the applicant, you know, sort of what has been done to understand the context of that, the immediate character of that neighborhood, and probably in particular that street. Having read the planning report, we're seeing that they did a study of almost 369 lots. So I guess I'm wanting to know how you went about that sort of understanding. I know that you're saying by right, they can build a certain structure that can increase intensification. However, at this time, my question to you is, if you could further comment on the staff report and explain what maybe you had done and taken into consideration for the particular decision-making point of, does this meet the character, you know, of the neighborhood?
Okay, thank you. Actually, I have a very good discussion with the city planner on file. We have an online meeting. And I explained my planning rationale. He personally agreed, and but he said he need get approval from the director. And but the manager, you know, is very, you know, serious on the number of the frontage. So only in this case, only the, actually, the only concern of the manager, not just planning staff, only the manager, the only concern is the frontage. But this is our existing set condition. We only have this length of the frontage. But the whole side, if we consider the whole side area is so big, if we don't apply for the land surveillance, this is the largest lot you can see in this neighborhood. So we don't have choice to change the frontage longer. This is the only issue we have. And also, this is the only concern from the planning manager. Even the staff agree my rationale. We already have the discussion. But so they keep their comments as before, this is the reason.
Any other questions? All right, let's take this into committee. Who'd like to get us started?
I can start it.
Ms. Sankar Peralta? You wanna get us? I saw a hand, or?
No, that's fine, Mr. Maziari can start. I saw him speaking first, so that's no problem, I can add later.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We as committee, we're always supportive with housing applications and intensification. But in this case, I tend to agree with the staff report. I think when we talk about the context, we talk about immediate context. We cannot go 1.8 kilometer and say there is something happening there and then apply it to this property. So to me, the lot frontage is not minor, and it fails to meet the four tests, so I cannot support this application.
Maybe I'll just add, just specifically in the official plan, I see the argument being made that, you know, in terms of comparing the overall size of the lot, these lots are a little deeper in the immediate context than some of the others. So it might stack up to some of the other lots in that regard. But the official plan notes prevailing size and configuration of lots. So while I do take the submission about the prevailing size of the lot, I still, along with Mr. Maziari, I'm hung up on the configuration. And that, for me, comes down to the lot frontage. I disagree that, in terms of the lot frontage, by no means do I think this is the largest on the street. There's some wider lots, or say, largest, the widest lot. There are some wider lots on the street. This is actually pretty typical for the street. So I look at approval of consent here down to just shy of 10 meters, and I have some concern what that may do within the immediate context. It almost opens up the door for any lot on the street to be chopped in half. I don't know if there's any other comments. Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, for you, I wanted to share my comments as well. You know, my, looking at, you know, sort of the variance itself, I understand what has been done to rectify that situation from the last presentation and hearing. And I think that there was some tremendous effort that was made, so thank you for that. But it comes to a point of really four tests that we have to look at. And, you know, the whole contentious issue is around, you know, of course, the lot frontages, and, you know, what's being done within the immediate context of the neighborhood. And in asking, you know, what has been done for the research, I can't really confirm or deny the conversations with planning staff. All I can read in front of me is what's there, which is a refusal. And upon their own studies, I have to take that into account. And I haven't really heard from the applicant that there has been further research or anything else that points, even as a sort of a study of the neighborhood and showing us different homes and what their frontages would be, etc., to show the similarity. So the problem that I'm still having, despite all of this, and the efforts made, and understanding that intensification could be done in a different format as well, and we'd still have to accept it, but what's presented to me right now, that's not what's presented. So I have to go with what's in front of me, and I have to agree with you, Mr. Chair, and member Maziari. I am concerned about this not meeting the four tests.
We have a motion, maybe to bring? I don't think Mr. Fazelli has any further comment, no. So if you do have a motion, please.
Okay, so I guess based on all that I've just said, you know, I don't believe this property, this application meets the four tests at this time. So I have to motion to refuse this application.
All right. For clarity, it's both the consent and the minor.
Yes, well, I mean, the consent and therefore, you know, the two.
Yes, so we have a motion on the floor for refusal of the consent and the minor variance portions of the application that was seconded by Mr. Maziari. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, the application is refused. Okay, the time is now 10:49. Let's take a five-minute relief break, and then we're gonna resume with item number four, 712 Eglington Avenue East. All right, thanks. All right. All right, we're back. We are on item number four this morning, 712 Eglington Avenue East. The purpose of the application is to construct a new garden suite in the rear yard. We've got variances for rear yard soft landscaping, rear yard setback of a garden suite, west side yard setback, separation distance, angular penetrations on the north, south, and east lot lines, height and lot coverage. On file, material from the applicant, memos from urban forestry, Metrolinks, letter of objection from a city councillor, Leeside Residents Association and local residents, as well as a late community planning report. We have our agent in person.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Ian Flett, and I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chair, as you may be aware, if you've reviewed the material here, the applicant is seeking revisions to the application, and I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea to visit those revisions first so that we're all on the same page.
Yes, of course. Let's pull up the public notice, take us through the revisions in the order on the notice, and let us know what modifications are being made.
And so these revisions come after discussion with community planning, and these revisions reflect word-for-word the changes that community planning sought in its report of October 18th. In respect of variance number one, a modification to the rear yard soft landscaping from 24.49% to 45.28%.
Okay.
Variance number two is completely removed, deleted.
Okay.
Variance number three would change the west side yard setback from 0 meters to 0.76 meters.
Okay.
Variance number four would be modified so that the distance between the garden suite and the residential building on the same lot is 7 meters rather than 6 meters. Variance number five is modified from requesting angular plane penetrations at all sides except the angular plane projected towards the opposite side lot line. So in this case, the angular plane towards the, towards the fourplex is being maintained, and that's consistent with what was requested by city staff. Variance number six concerns the height of the garden suite. Originally, the applicant sought 6.3 meters. In this case, they've amended it to 6 meters, again, in accordance with the community planning report. And finally, variance number seven is deleted, removed from the application.
All right. All right, sir, we've got a number of speakers on this file. I do know there is a bit of a history with it, and I will, I'll reserve my comments for now. I want to provide you an opportunity to make your presentation. So we will get the five minutes up for you, and whenever you're ready.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Sir, I recognize that this property has generated considerable attention. I also appreciate that members have received a large volume of correspondence and will be hearing from members of the community after you hear from me. Some of the matters, some of the material concerns matters that are not before the committee and fall under the jurisdiction of other city divisions. And this is referenced in the city staff report, and there are ongoing conversations in respect of those matters. I will not be addressing those issues. My comments relate only to the planning merits of the application as it stands today. The application seeks permission to construct a two-story garden suite at the rear of a lot that is currently being developed with a four-unit dwelling previously approved by this committee. Since circulation of the original notice, the plans have been revised in consultation with city staff, as we've just discussed. Two variances have been deleted and the remainder reduced in magnitude. The angular planes on the east and rear have been brought into compliance. The only remaining projection is the front angular plane towards the main dwelling, which results solely from the 0.5-meter reduction in the separation distance between the fourplex and the proposed garden suite. Sir, as you may know, the property is owned RM, and this contemplates multi-unit residential use and permits a garden suite as an ancillary building. In planning terms, the proposal maintains both the intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw. It provides a compact secondary dwelling in keeping with council's direction for gentle intensification in neighborhoods. It respects the scale and character of surrounding properties through appropriate setbacks, angular planes, and landscaped open space, and it introduces no new use, density, or servicing demands beyond what the zoning anticipates. Numerically, sir, the variances, and committee members, the variances are modest. Functionally, they do not create adverse impacts of overlook, shadow, or drainage. The applicant has reviewed the comments from Metrolinks and Urban Forestry. Metrolinks has no objection in principle and requested standard conditions for technical review, which we have no issue with. Urban Forestry has indicated no outstanding condition or objection. I understand that members have heard from many neighbors and will still hear from them today. The revisions now before you directly respond to the concerns that can probably be addressed through this process, solely the application before you for a garden suite. And in fact, you'll see that a professional planner was retained by one of the residence groups, and many of the comments raised in his report are, in fact, addressed through the changes that we've made to the application. In conclusion, Mr. Chair and members, this is a smaller and more disciplined proposal than the one originally circulated. It meets the four statutory tests under Section 451 of the Planning Act, which is confirmed also in the community planning report. We respectfully request that the committee approve the application with the conditions requested on the record. We thank you for your time and opportunity to assist in making your decisions, and I'm certainly available to answer any of your questions and also to comment after you've heard from other speakers. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the committee.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Okay, who have any questions for our agent at this time? Yes, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we just need to clarify the change to variance five. Can I have staff just put up the staff report? Just the staff report? Just the way it's, yep, sorry, for variance five?
Five, I would, yeah, I had a feeling five would be the one that you might want.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the way that you've modified it, you are only seeking a variance to the south side?
Correct.
Is that?
The variance to the, I'm just trying to think of the orientation of the lot. Let's take a quick look so we get this.
We just, we just need to phrase it correctly.
Yeah. To the south side is correct, yes.
So that's, that's the only variance you're asking for, in relation to variance? That's the only side?
In connection to angular.
Right, and so the flip side of that, you're eliminating the angular plane for the north and east side?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for clarification.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify before the neighbors.
Yes, thank you. Just so I understand, through these modifications, I do note there's an updated site plan as well. Did the, the access to the garden suite, proposed garden suite, did that change as well?
I'm not under the impression that there was, let me take a look. I believe that there was an expanded access. Let me bring up the plans if you, if we might. I can't confirm that there is a specific change to the access, and perhaps, sir, I'll be able to confirm with my client. I do note that the addition of a setback towards the street, towards Runzi, is creating more available space. And I do see here that if we look at the site plan, there is a 90-centimeter, almost a meter kind of walkway that is away from the driveway. So site access is, and I did not review what the original plan had contemplated for that access.
Sure, I'll come back to you on that. I'm trying to understand, because, you know, we're really, you guys are really pinched on the, that landscaping in the back, and I want to understand the, how, what the proposed function is. If you have a, you're proposing another suite, one would presume you need some form of access to the front door. So maybe it's just some clarification of how that is going to interface with the proposed soft landscaping?
Well, and now looking at the current, I see that you have the current plan up, and compared to the old plan, the current plan shows access off the...
The secondary street?
Yeah, off the west side.
Okay.
Whereas before, it was facing the fourplex.
Okay.
And I think, and that's, that's the way that a lot of the lands, because the available open space, landscape open space, because of that significant reduction in the requested variance there, would have been captured by, by creating that new access.
All right, fair enough, fair enough. Okay. Other questions at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You can sit down for a moment. Okay, we have some other speakers. Who has come in person to speak to this item today? And who would like to come first? So, welcome.
Hi.
Just, I just want to say a couple words. So I sat on the, I've sat on one of the past approvals for this application. I'm well up to date on the history of it, as well as some of the issues that did come up after the approval. I will say this. With respect to the application that's before us, we need to consider it as it is before us today. Meaning, I, I can't take into consideration what may have been there or what was there in the past. I'm very much aware and very much up to date that there's a separate matter that's being pursued, but there's other channels that that is going through. There's another process by which that is, so, so Committee of Adjustment is not a punitive body. We need to consider the applications that are before us at the time, okay? So I'm saying that to everybody just so that in terms of, you can understand where we are, where certainly I'm coming from as a chair in terms of the approach and how to deal with this application. I just wanted to put that out there for, for everybody to hear, okay? So when you're ready, please give us your name and your address.
Okay.
And welcome.
Okay, I respect what you have just said. Unfortunately, you might hear something what you've just said that I shouldn't say, but it's already written up, and I'm not a very articulate public speaker, so I will just read on.
Your name and address before you get going.
Sure. Okay. My name is Karen Huang. I live at 714 Eglington Avenue East. I'm here to oppose Eglington Avenue East Garden Suite application. I understand that Mr. Ian Flett have never seen the site before. So since I live next door to the site, I just want to give you guys some context of what's going on right now. So, dear Mr. Chair and committee members, in this respect here for the garden suite, the Mott City did not receive one single letter of support, as was the case for their fourplex. However, somehow they have put on their fence that they received an astounding 105 letters of support. Anyway, here for the garden suite, there are 10 impassioned and strong opposition letters from neighbors, our community representative, a reputable land planner, and our local councillor. I am here to tell the truth. In just the last two weeks alone, I have found 16 nails on my driveway, which I have brought as evidence, and ranging from 1 inch to 3 inches long. Mott City has killed a healthy 30-centimeter maple tree in our backyard that is a boundary tree that was never, ever in their way. Now they continue to trespass on... Now they continue to trespass onto my property with their friends. I've let Mod City know about all this and have only received silence from them. No apologies at all. The city has encouraged me to call the police about the nails. Because of their hostile nature towards me, I oppose reducing their east side setback to point seven-six meters, and I ask the Committee of Adjustment to maintain the one-point-five-meter setback. After Mod City received concessions from you, not once but twice, to gain approximately eight feet of land in the front yard setback in order to protect an eighty-year-old honey locust tree, it was not good enough for them. This generosity from the city only made them flout their agreement with you and Urban Forestry, and they went ahead and killed the eighty-year-old honey locust tree without city approval or a permit. They even denied it to the media that there was ever a tree that existed. Breaking the law are desperate attempts by Mod City, who is not only the builder and indirect owner of seven-one-two Eglington East, but also the real estate agent representing themselves on the purchase of this property. Right now, the garden suite application here is because they gained the land by dishonesty. However, they, however, do they really have this extra land now that they've already poured the concrete for the fourplex and basement walk-up? All of a sudden, a few days ago, uh, we get an updated, um, rear yard soft landing change to show soft landscaping under the fire escape, um, staircase. Why was it not shown before? This space is already fully encased with one-foot-wide concrete walls on all four walls, so the new site plan is suspicious. I've submitted three photos to show you, which was up earlier. They are proposing soft landscaping, but it is not green space that is shown on the updated rear yard soft landing, uh, photo. However, they show green space on their site plan. What I can see on the ground is gravel, also what's underneath the gravel. Another attempt to deceive you is also on the updated site plan. It states, um, three garbage bins for four households, and there is no mention at all for organic waste bins. This is astonishingly short-sighted, and I believe in attempt to trick us that there is land left for the garden suite. The site plan also shows a tiny area to place the garbage bins, which is on the east side, right next to the fourplex. This space is just one-point-two-two meters or forty-eight inches wide. I urge the Committee of Adjustment to have Mod City submit a realistic waste management plan. Another major problem is the parking. The whole west side of seven-one-two is next to Ramsay Road that is a no-parking zone for the whole length of their property. You should know that tensions are so high that neighbors has had to call the police for help. With limited services to provide parking and garbage solutions, there is, does not justify bringing in a fifth tenant. In my opinion, Mod City fails many times over on test one, two, and three. Lastly, I would like to add that ironically, Mod City has shot themselves in the foot with the illegal killing of the honey locust tree and therefore fails miserably in test number four. They have not been respecting and reinforcing the neighborhood character. In fact, they have been purposely destroying it to gain land. By killing our two city-protected-sized healthy trees, they have severely negatively impacted our flood space index. We are worried, all worried about all the concrete that has already been poured and the runoff water with no trees to help absorb it. Now, we have to, we ask that no more concrete is poured into the ground of seven-one-two Eglington East. Therefore, no garden suite. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just check. Uh, just give me a moment. I just want to make sure I can see Ms. Sankar Peralta on my. No questions? Okay. Uh, all right, we have another speaker as well. Welcome, sir.
I would suggest that we request that Terry Mills go next.
Sure.
He's the registered planner.
Sure, before we get there, okay, uh, your, your name and address is?
Oh, I'm Jeff Cattell, but I'm, I'm actually here on behalf of the Leeside Residence Association, but I'm also here on behalf of the immediate neighbor on the north side. You've had, heard from the east side, into the corner lot. Now from the north side, Luke and Catherine Gee. She had a family emergency today and was not able to attend.
Fair enough.
I have her, her, uh, statement.
Okay, I'll take your recommendation to start with, Mr. Mills. We have him online.
I, I have to come in by telephone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Mills. Your address, please.
Yeah, okay, I, my address is one-oh-one Roehampton Avenue, Toronto.
All right, and just to confirm, this is Terry Mills?
Yes, Terry Mills, and I'm a, a registered professional planner, operate under the, uh, name of Eris, and I've, uh, been involved in the multiplex, uh, planning development, and I've been involved in some of the recent applications coming through. One point I, I would like to start with, if we could just go to the present, their presentation drawings, page four. They have, uh, shown their, uh, the open space, and they have also identified that under the staircase, uh, they want to count that as soft landscaping. And this is sort of one of the problems I see in the plans is, now, the definition in zoning bylaw of soft landscaping says it excludes hard surfaces such as decorative stonework, retaining walls, walkways, or other surfaces of a landscape architectural elements. Yeah, so what we're seeing here is they're saying that underneath the, uh, stairwell, that that should qualify as soft landscaping, and actually doesn't meet the definition, and it's not land, soft landscaping. Uh, likewise, concern with the walkway to the east of that, in that that is a walkway that runs along the side of the building, and again, that would be, uh, some form of so, hard landscaping. Again, when we are looking at, uh, the access to the garden suite from the side street, uh, they're showing that as being, uh, permeable pavers, which again are not soft landscaping, so that should not be part of the calculation. And then furthermore, we have the, uh, the, uh, bike parking, and those, uh, would not be on soft landscaping, and they would need to have some sort of footpath access in them. Are you still hearing me, by the way?
Yes, yes, we are. We can hear you loud and clear.
But I have, we had some bugs there, so anyway. So I mean, I think we do need to do another, uh, recalculation of the, what the soft landscaping is, and it's quite relevant. And as I say, you know, it, this gets complicated. Like, when we had the, uh, fourplex at the front, we still had a rear yard. So all these things that go with any house or even multiple units, such as bicycle storage, and, uh, you know, where do you put your garbage storage and, uh, walkways and, uh, all that, and even your pet relief, can all happen in a large open space. But on the other hand, once you put this garden suite in the backyard, you're taking up all that open space. And, uh, so I had diagrams at the end of my letter, and if you can put that up and rotate it ninety degrees, that would be terrific. So it's the last page of my letter. And I think if, if you start by doing, hitting the, uh, rotation, I don't think that's my letter.
Just, uh, give staff a moment, uh, I'd, I'd be mind.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Give you some extra, a few seconds.
And I'll, I'll keep talking while we're at it. You know, the interesting thing here is, by the way, is, as a fourplex, it's a fourplex. But again, if you go back to the city definitions in the zoning bylaw, once you have five units, it is considered an apartment building. And again, with apartment buildings, they can start to look at things like, uh, bicycles, areas for them, garbage and how it's handled, and also outdoor open space or outdoor amenities. Now, I appreciate that, normally we see them in taller buildings, but there still are qualities. You've got, you know, um, five families sharing this lot, and if you have children, there's no place really where they can get out and play on their own property. Uh, yeah, so if you just scroll to the last one, and then if you hit rotate, uh, then that will, uh, come around. And you want to hit scale as well. So, by putting in this, you know, garden suite in the rear, we've actually taken up all the amenity space and open space that otherwise, as a house or as a, uh, you know, if you can flick that, it would be great. What I'm showing here actually are three examples, and the two smaller boxes, uh, one of them is showing it as a, uh, yeah, on the upper left, I'm showing you, that's just showing the back of the rear house, the brown part, and the rear yard. It's all open space. And even when you do the fourplex in the front, you still have most of that rear yard area into which you can fit things like, you know, outdoor passive seating area, your tree canopy, some play area for children, and also those things such as garbage pails, uh, bicycle storage, and, uh, there's always this problem with that.
Okay, final, final words?
Final words? Okay, basically, in my mind, we are not reading the official plan, and I've identified various parts of it. I don't see this as being a minor matter. It's a substantial one. And ultimately, I don't see this application being appropriate and desirable. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Questions? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Cattell, would you like to go next?
I'm, uh, I'd like to, um, present a statement, um, of Luke and Catherine Gee, who are the owners of two-eighty-three Ramsay Road, which is the, um, house, um, to the immediate north of the subject property. Our apologies for not being with you in person. It is with great sadness and disappointment that we find ourselves in front of you again. This is for the simple reason that this developer, Mod City, and their investors failed to comply with the one condition applied to their fourplex application that permitted them to gain additional land at the front of this site location, a generous concession, considering what was being asked. This garden suite application is a direct result of actions taken by Mod City to remove against Committee of Adjustment conditions the honey locust tree and free up land for a garden suite. Their proposal was for seven minor variances and has recently been modified to five variances. While they've seemingly reduced the size of this second proposed building on the property, it does not eliminate the risk to the adjacent properties regarding water table issues as outlined in our letter of objection, nor does it address the effects on the local community of the additional vehicles which will be generated with five families now being proposed to live on this, on this site. This remains an overdevelopment of what was a single-family dwelling and now is being designed to support five families with approval given for four at this time. While absolutely, we understand the need for appropriate housing, what is suggested today doesn't support at least two of the four tests despite Mod City's revised plans. This proposal is not minor at six meters high with negative implications, obstructed views for entry and, entry and exit from our property next door. It, it presents an ongoing safety issue for the wider community. It's also not a desirable use appropriate for this land. Five families with limited waste disposal options, no parking, no runoff considerations, and risk of flooding to both the residents of seven-twelve but also in the surrounding area. Again, again, I would reiterate, the only reason we're here today is because Mod City went against the conditions, so I'll, I'll move on. Approval of this request, I believe, would set a dangerous precedent within the development community, as Mod City are seen to agree to conditions approved by the committee but then go and do as they see fit, according to their own commercial needs and not in alignment and consideration of the city's objectives. While Mod City may claim that they don't require parking for these residents, it is naive to think that in two thousand and twenty-five, five families will be without a vehicle. Further, they imply those families won't require short-term parking in order to drop off groceries or visitors coming and going. What do they honestly think is going to happen when a family tried to drop off a week shopping with nowhere safe to park, or that their, all their residents will come to, will come to live without some form of personal transportation? During the course of construction, despite clear and appropriate signage, repeated direct pleas to Mod City and their contractors to avoid parking illegally, despite reports to traffic enforcement, they continued to do so. It therefore would be incredibly short-sighted of Mod City to think that the new residents won't also park in this way. They appear to be incapable of following city bylaws, which in this specific context are designed to protect motorists and pedestrians. The council has, have, has been made aware of these dangers, as have the principals at the schools. This intersection is a known accident hotspot, and whether it's five minutes or five hours, the risk is not diminished in any way. As for ourselves, the garden suite will continue, will present an obstruction of our view towards Ramsay and Eglington. Given its size, despite the revisions, the garden suite will present light issues for our property, and our privacy will be compromised. I would emphasize that this garden suite is not a minor adjustment. Um, there is insufficient landscaping despite the provision, the revision. It is a clear overdevelopment of the site and therefore not an appropriate use of the land. The message that an approval of this proposal was set, in all honesty, is alarming. I would urge the Committee of Adjustment to give exceptionally careful consideration of any plans presented to them by this organization for this site. This proposal is for further development, and in no way does it mitigate the environmental impacts created by the loss of the, of the honey locust tree and the second tree, the board, the boundary tree. Any subsequent proposal should, in our opinion, reflect that loss, i.e., restore a garden for our new residents at seven-twelve Eglington Avenue to enjoy, not to fill it with a parking pad or another building. Thank you. That's from Catherine and Luke Gee. I'll move on to the submission of the Leeside Residents Association, uh, which is located at sixty-three zero-one Bayview Avenue. The Leeside Residents Association wishes to express our strong opposition to the application for variances for garden suite in the rear of a previously approved multiplex building. The committee has before it also the report of Terry Mills, registered planner. Before addressing the variances for the garden suite, it needs to be understood that the space proposed for the garden suite at the rear is only feasible as a result of the moving of the main building forward on the lot. The description for the previous approved application for the property reads, "To construct a three-story fourplex development previously approved by file, however, revised proposal requires decreased front yard due to rear yard tree protection and preservation." As is widely known, this tree was culled by the applicant, not protected as intended by the Committee of Adjustment in its February two thousand and twenty-five Committee of Adjustment decision. Therefore, the application should be refused on the basis simply that it does not maintain the intent and purpose of the city's planning system, which understands that participants implement and comply with their commitments that they have made to authorities. Instead, this application represents bad faith gaming of the system by the applicant. Moving on, in consideration of the current application and its variances recently reduced from seven to five, still cover the following: the setback on the Ramsay sidewalk, the west side, separation distance from the primary building, reduced soft landscaping, the height of the garden suite, and the angular plane, which our understanding was it was, would negatively affect the neighbor to the south. The, um, the agent for the applicant is, is saying differently, so that's, that's a, that's a confusion there. In addition, uh, by, we question the accuracy of the zoning examination. It appears that, um, area is being counted as soft landscaping despite being basically cement and stairs and that kind of thing. We also note that the revised variances were presented on October the seventeenth, which was the same date that residents were supposed to submit their, their written submissions. So residents have not had an opportunity to review, um, these minor changes to the, to the application. This application, let's face it, this application represents a significant intensification on a very small lot. This is only twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five feet. The previous application, number three, you know, you had problems with it. and it was on a much bigger lot. It's moving from a single-family dwelling to one that will house five families such that it has been considered now, needs to be considered as an apartment building under the zoning bylaw with the associated requirements such as parking options, shed for storage, for garbage bins, and landscaping to qualify as a garden. Proposed garden suite is clearly too large, too high, and pushes the limits without regard to the interests of the neighbors and the public interest. The application fails the four tests as defined by the Planning Act. The variance requested is not minor. Proposal is not desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land. The general intent of the purpose of the city's zoning code and bylaws are not maintained and the general intent and purpose of the official plan are not maintained. We therefore request that the application be refused. Uh, we noted there that the applicant, um, revised variances have, have not been sufficiently evaluated um, by our staff and as such, um, an alternative strategy would be to defer it and, and, and really have a careful look at the, uh, at the, uh, site plans and see whether the, uh, the zoning variances are actually what, what they claim to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cattell. Questions? Okay, no questions at this time. Okay. Do we have anybody else in gallery to speak to this item? Okay, Steph, let's move, uh, I believe we have some people online waiting to speak.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We already conducted, uh, Lillian Novakis. She doesn't want to speak, so we're gonna move the rest. Howard Kaiser is unmuted.
Mr. Kaiser?
Mr. Kaiser, you are muted to speak. Mr. Kaiser, can you hear us? You are muted to speak.
Hello, Mr. Kaiser? I, we can hear something coming through the line, but it's faint. Can you hear us? Okay. Yes, please.
Larry Reimer is unmuted right now. Larry Reimer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Your name and address, please.
My name is Larry Reimer, R-E-I-M-E-R. My address is, uh, one zero three Donley Drive.
All right.
I'm, uh, I'm a resident near the corner of Donley and Ramsey, so I get to see and hear the construction, um, of this project from my backyard. So I'm one of the not adjacent neighbors, but my backyard doesn't abut on it, but it's very, very close by. Um, I signed up today, um, largely because I was disappointed that I only received notice of this, uh, this hearing the night before last. And, um, I'm not going to make any technical submissions as I haven't had the chance to really look at this in, in detail, but I have read the submissions that, uh, are on the website and I'm here to express some support of the opposition to the, uh, to the application. I, I'm, I, I should say that, uh, Mr. Chairperson, I'm a little bit concerned about your comments about jurisdiction, uh, that you made at the, at the outset. And I understand why you made them, but, um, on my review of the submissions, it seems to me that the committee has to grapple with a serious credibility issue with respect to this application and, and certainly the committee can control the integrity of its own process. What I will suggest, my punchline, and I'll return to it later, is that the, the real option here is to defer this application pending the, uh, the, the handling of the tree issue and whatever forum. And this is something that, if I read correctly, was suggested by the, the forestry department and requested by the forestry department. I think that's your obvious, that's your obvious so, so solution for today. Um, alternatively, I suggest that the, uh, the application should simply be denied. You know the history of this better than I because I wasn't at the, the first, uh, the first phase, but obviously you gave permission to, to squeeze this, this building into, into a small lot. And as it's being built, it, it's clear that it doesn't really conform to the neighborhood at all. Um, it's, it is overdevelopment, as someone said, and the residents certainly aren't pleased. But, but the key issue here, and I know it's one that people are trying to duck and I know the applicant's trying to duck, but the reality is the developer then cut down the tree that you and others said it had to protect and has the temerity to come to us and to come to everybody asking that they put another building in that space that it created improperly. It is breathtaking, quite frankly, and, and nobody can turn a blind eye to this. This is not a minor change. Um, nothing here fits the plan of the neighborhood. The, what do the neighbors get out of it? It's been touched on by a few of the other speakers. Uh, neighbor, neighbors don't get anything. They get five to ten cars parked on adjacent streets, probably in front of my house. I won't be pleased. Um, we have runoff issues with this property. It's a strange area because there's a funny little springtime river that goes through that area and heaven knows what, um, what'll happen. Certainly with the first manifestation of the approval, there was at least a backyard which would absorb some of the water. Who knows what's gonna happen here? But most, you know, but, but most obviously on a day-to-day basis is we effectively get an apartment block in, in that corner. So, um, my submission in final, in, 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 in sum really is that the owner is poking both you and the neighborhood in the eye on this. And your option, as I suggested, is at a minimum defer this application until the tree issue that we all know about and we all know is noise on the side. But defer this application until that tree issue, um, plays itself out in whatever forum. Come back and deal with it at that point because who knows what orders will be, uh, will be made as a result of it. Or secondly, deny the application outright, um, given that this particular building doesn't conform to either the letter or the spirit, letter or spirit of whatever else, what everyone else is trying to do, um, in the circumstances. Those are my comments, sorry.
All right, thank you for that. Questions? Okay, no questions. Thank you. Steph, we have some additional speakers online. Okay, you can speak. Let's give your name and address first. All right, Steph, uh, do we have, just in the meantime, uh, is, uh, Mr. Bostock coming to speak? Is he? No. Okay. All right, welcome. Okay, did you want to give your name and address first, please?
Yes, Howard Kaiser, seven thirty-four Eglinson Avenue East.
Mr. Kaiser, we can hear you, uh, loud and clear. Um, you, believe you would like to make a submission, uh, on this file?
I can't hear that.
I believe you'd like to make, my understanding is you'd like to make a submission on this, uh, file for seven one-two Eglinson Avenue East?
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, would you like to make a submission? Would you like to speak?
I would like to speak, yes.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Howard Kaiser, seven thirty-four Eglinson Avenue East. Um, I gotta say, it's, uh, been a bit of fiasco there at seven twelve Eglinson Avenue East. My belief is that the system, uh, that is being gamed, that, uh, Mod City seems to have complete disregard to the neighborhood and to the well-being of the residents on the block. I could speak to that, uh, honey locust, which, uh, during the, uh, pandemic, uh, pardon me, not the pandemic, the, uh, the, the great electrical grid shutdown. Walking around that tree and, uh, twenty years ago, there, uh, were a lot of raccoons in that tree. Certainly was a habitat for a lot. Regardless, we, uh, have great memories of that tree. We heard that this, uh, multiplex was coming in to the corner. We, uh, were quite surprised, but when we were told that the, uh, tree itself was going to be protected, we thought, well, they've asked for a variance and they've moved the, uh, building close to the, uh, close to Eglinson Avenue. Lo and behold, shortly after, that tree came down. I think Mod City's operating in bad faith. I think they're gaming the system. I live halfway down the block. We see other projects like this being proposed. And, uh, I think this disregard for the system sets a very bad precedent. And it's making a lot of homeowners, property owners on the block anxious. I commiserate with, uh, Karen Wong, uh, regarding her struggle. The building on the corner is occupied by pickup trucks and working trucks on the corner, creating an already dangerous corner, even more dangerous. With the addition of five new families, I can only see this being a complete disaster. Uh, I do know people who have actually been involved in car accidents right on that very car, uh, ve-very corner. And, uh, just as a, a neighbor, I am expressing a, a great concern. Uh, there is water runoff. Uh, we already, I live halfway down the block. We already got a pretty swamped backyard. Which is very concerned about, uh, what's being proposed and mostly the manner in which Mod City has been moving forward on their projects. Yeah, that's what I've got to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kaiser. Uh, questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Steph, do we have anybody else online at this time? All right, uh, that concludes our speakers. I'm now going to take it back to our agent, uh, Mr. Flett, uh, and provide him an opportunity to respond to, uh, some of the comments that we heard, uh, in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will take this opportunity to, uh, respond to just a handful of the comments that were made. Uh, some of them are the result of, I think, a misreading or a misunderstanding of the application. And so I would turn first to the comments that you heard from Mr. Mills, uh, who's a well-regarded, uh, land use planner without any doubt. But I think the application material provided by our planning firm, C2 Planning, uh, was pretty clear that the, the space under the staircase was not counted towards the soft landscaping that is now the variance before you. There is an intention for those stairs to be permeable and for the space underneath to be able to absorb water, but it is not counted as soft landscaping. If it was, given that it's going to have the function of absorbing water, um, it would, the soft landscaping would be fifty-one point one eight percent, but that's not what is before you. Uh, Mr. Mills also spoke about this now qualifying as an apartment building. And of course, you've looked at the zoning, you've looked, you, you know how these things can be parsed through definitions. An apartment building is itself a freestanding structure that carries five units. So this would not qualify as an apartment building. But I do understand the point that he was making that because of the number of families that would now be able to occupy this site, uh, some concern around, uh, around what kind of amenities they have. I would make the, um, the counterargument that those who wish to occupy the site will assess for themselves the needs they may have. And Howard Talbot Park, which is a vast, beautiful park, is four hundred and fifty meters or a five-minute walk away. I myself raised my daughter for the first seven years of her life in an apartment building downtown with nary open space available as an amenity. Um, the concerns raised by Ms. Wong, let me begin, I'm gonna separate her concerns into two pieces. First, the site issues, I have marked them down and I will communicate with the applicant that nails, detritus, issues with trespassing must be addressed. She, I, I, I absolutely acknowledge and I share her frustration that is not appropriate. So under that bucket, that's my commitment to the committee and to Ms. Wong. As it concerns the issues that Ms. Wong raised on planning, there, they have a little, they have a little less traction. One of them was that she had portrayed the area for waste bins as one point two two meters. That's just the width. It's actually much longer than that and will be able to accommodate the expected number of containers, uh, uh, that would be generated required for the site. I want to, I, I do want to address frustrations and anger and, and, and the concern about gaming the system, however you want to put it. Sir, I think that you very clearly outlined the scope of the committee's responsibilities under the Planning Act and they exclude many of those pejorative kind of characterizations of, of my, of my client. But I do acknowledge that, that frustration is there. Nevertheless, Mr. Kaiser said five new families, a complete disaster. And I'm sure that he was talking about parking, but at the end of the day, this is an opportunity for a home, for, in a housing unit, in a desirable, uh, neighborhood. There will be consequences for the stigmatizing features and frustrations that have been brought up. But this is not the form for that, as you indicated yourself. This is the form to say, does this meet the four tests? Planning staff have indicated they're satisfied it meets the intent of the general plan, uh, 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 intent of the official plan and, and the zoning bylaw. Uh, Mr. Chen, the planner on this matter, has provided his eloquent opinion and the applicant here has brought this application down into something that the city now is supportive of. Not with, and, and all those other issues will be addressed. Those are the comments and, and the way that I would respond to what I've heard. I remain available for any questions you or other, uh, committee members may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flett. Um, uh, maybe it just, I have a few, uh, brief questions. Um, perhaps we can pull up the most recent, uh, site plan, uh, that was submitted by the applicant. Uh, I think there was some, uh, there was some discussion brought up about waste management. I just want to, uh, can you maybe identify, uh, for us, uh, on the site plan, uh, where those bins are proposed?
Right. So if we zoom in to, uh, what we have before the screen and I'm, north, the reason I'm disoriented is north is going to the left, right? So where that walkway is at the front of the property, if we zoom in just a little more, we would see that there is a, a hatched space past the walkway. So into the depth of the building, is that, no, if we zoom in just a little more still? Yeah, there we go. So that hatched area there is the area that's proposed for, um, uh, for, for waste collection bins.
Okay, and that, the width there, it's just hard to see on the screen.
The width is one point two two meters. There's not an indication of what that depth is, but if you were to imagine that the line of one But if you were to imagine that the line of one point two-two meters, I would suggest it would probably fit three times in there. And so maybe it's three to four meters in depth.
Yeah, so I, I'm just curious, because I, I mean, I'm a resident of the city of Toronto. I know those bins can be quite big, at a minimum, they're two feet wide. But the larger, extra-large bins, they're, they're three to even four feet wide. So you put a three-foot bin in there, you even turn it to its side, right, thirty inches, you're only one point two-two meters. How does it not block, like, is there not an access issue to, with those bins being placed in there? Because by the time, you put a bin in there, how do you get around it? You know what I mean?
Well, what is, what are we agreeing the dimensions of a bin are? I don't think a bin is one point two-two meters deep.
No, but wouldn't you say that you need room to walk around or maneuver around the bins? I mean, at a minimum, they're, they're two feet wide, right? So you're left really with two feet.
Well, depth, well, sir, so I think depth is the concern that we, if we're walking around them and we're imagining that, that, let's say this is the walkway and let's say this is the one point two-two meters here.
Of course, yeah.
Right, so I've got a bin, I'm able to walk in and place my refuse into the bin.
That's what I'm not sure about, because at one point two-two meters, you've got, so the bin at a minimum is roughly two feet. Those are the small bins, right? But i- if you go to a medium size, the bins are all on the city of Toronto website. I've dealt with this myself, trust me.
Well, maybe, should we check the website to get the dimensions?
Well, I, I just want to get, you know, I'm, I'm a little, I understand you've got the depth, right? But if you, that would require you be able to get around the bin in the first place. And if at a minimum, you've got two feet for a bin, you're left with basically half that, so two feet to kind of maneuver around the bin. And then what happens if you want to get one bin out? You know, what happens if on recycling day, how do you get it out if your garbage bin is blocking? You probably have to pull all the bins out just to get the access. The other question I had for you was, how, what's the intention for garbage for the proposed garden suite? Are they, are they, is it the intention to walk on the flanking street up and around the front of the property to dispose of garbage? Are they going to have a separate set of bins for them off of that garden suite?
If you give me just a minute.
Sure, yeah.
The, it's not clear to me, sir, and what I can do is reach out to to the planner to get more specifics on that. With that said, it seems to me that it's quite possible for either the bin is accessed, those front bins are accessed by the occupants of the garden suite or resolved on, like, within the site or even possibly within the garden suite itself. Yeah, I, I would note, sir, that site operation concerns, like garbage bins, are something that gets resolved usually very simply through some sort of a technical understanding of how things work, right?
Yeah, fair enough.
And holding up or refusing an application on the basis that someone might have difficulty getting around a garbage bin is not a, one of the tests under the Planning Act. I suppose it would maybe fit under minor, but very, you know, with, with difficulty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, I mean, from my standpoint, I'm just, I mean, you're at, it seems like, you know, with respect, you're sort of pushing as much as you can with respect to some, some of the variances. You have soft landscaping at the rear, really kind of pushing to get those numbers up there, so. I mean, that's why I ask, right?
Sure.
Because if it doesn't, if it, if you determine that, you know, that space doesn't work and all of a sudden you need to introduce a garbage area, that's going to throw your stats off quite a bit. The second part of it I, I wanted to ask you a little bit about was the bicycle parking. So is my understanding that there's no bicycle parking requirement for the site? Because I do see it on the site plan.
Sorry, actually, I'm not sure if bicycle parking is a requirement of the, under the city bylaw for a structure of this size. I don't think it actually would be, because it's not, it's not usually for, in a residential area. But it is provided, because the expectation would be that people would be using public transit and bicycles for the transportation needs, given the parking.
Okay, and it's, where it's provided, I see there's three spaces, one point eight meters by point six meters. Is that space for the bicycle parking counted towards your soft landscaping?
I believe it is, sir, yes, because you can certainly park on top of, you can, you can park a bicycle on grass.
Okay, fair enough.
I've done that before. And I'm just getting a message that the, that there is, there is adequate space on the Rumsay side of the garden suite, given the setback
Yes.
for, for a waste bin to be, to be stored there until collection day.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay. All right, that's all of my questions. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, sir, a garden suite does require bicycle spaces.
It does require.
Yes, thanks, thanks for, for the, yeah, for that clarification.
Mr. Marziani, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, my first question was actually in regard with the landscaping, which was answered. I think bicycle parkings are required and I, I'm not sure you can park it on the grass, but I think you're pushing as much as you can to get that number, which is fine. I want you to, to give us a brief explanation, a planning rationale for the building height and setback on the east, because it's affecting, directly affecting the east neighbor. So can you briefly address that? What is the planning rationale? Because you're going two meters high, higher than requirement, and also going almost two and a half feet closer to the property tonight.
Right, well, there is no overlooked concern in respect of the position of the, in respect of the additional height. So any impact as it concerns the addressing minor, I don't think raises a problem for this application. In terms, in terms of suitable development for the land, as we've indicated, this is absolutely in line with where the city is headed in terms of a gentle intensification of neighborhoods. So that test, I believe, is adequately addressed. And then in terms of the general intent and purpose of the official plan and the zoning, at least as it concerns the zoning, we would, we would argue that two meters above the recommended height with the application of the required angular plane does mitigate that, that height. So you're not seeing a two-meter wall on the east side, you're actually just seeing a partial wall and then, and then backing off.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the forty-five degree angle, I think it's, it's toning down the effect, but still like two meters higher than required.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Flett, okay. I'm going to take this into committee now. We've, we've heard a lot on this one. Brief, brief discussion amongst our members, followed by motion and decision. Who would like to get us started? Okay, I'm going to provide a few comments, maybe that'll prompt some of the other members to jump in. I will say, I, this is a very challenging application for me. I, I think, you know, the applicant clearly knows where, you know, where they can push, where they need to pull back, which as a, as a member makes, makes my decision more difficult. You know, when these things start to get close to whether or not meeting, they meet the four tests. Certainly, I would agree with Mr. Marziani, the, the use of the angular plane between the house and the garden suite certainly helps to mitigate the size of the massing. I think where I, I get a little bit concerned is, you know, we really are kind of scraping here to kind of ensure, you know, really what's left of, of our, of our backyard. You know, it's, the, you know, I look at the separation distance, the requirement's seven point five meters. They're, they're asking for a reduction of point five meters. You know, I, I ask myself, oh, is that minor, you know, we're point five meters, it's, it's, is it, is it much of a difference? And I, I would, you know, you look at the plan and, and you realize, okay, it's really to facilitate a second bedroom in this suite, which is desirable, certainly from an intensification standpoint. But what I, you know, also have to consider is that you have a pretty substantial basement walk-up off the back of the building, and you've got a pretty substantial egress stairs well that's creating bulk and massing. And I, I'm curious, do you see what my fellow members have to think? But it's, I, I think it's really coming up to sort of the line there in terms of what would be appropriate for intensification. I want to ensure that we're not, it's not an over-intensification. Because I think the easy thing almost would be to say, well, if the, if the building itself, which they've already come and got the approval for, was setback that extra point five meters, it would certainly make us a lot easier, because then the height variance would be, wouldn't be there as well. So you'd eliminate two variances. But I think, you know, in this case, it's, it's tough, because they're, they're kind of working hand in hand. On the, on the setback on the flanking street, I'm looking at the relationship to the immediate neighbor at the rear. So where they're, how far back their house is set, and, and looking for a transition there between the two. Again, it's a tough, it's a tough call. Members, I, you have comments on? I don't know if this, if we're, we're thinking along the same lines, or maybe there's some other concerns?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with your comments. I, I personally think it's, the applicant is pushing every boundary for this application. But I think the revisions are making it a more acceptable application. But I still have some concern with the landscaping. I don't think it's, I mean, graphically, it shows that it all, it's all green, but it's not going to happen like that with the bike parks and you know, garbage management.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that garbage is going to work on the side. But I do, I take their submission that they could have the garbage on the, off of the garden suite. But then they also have to, you know, you've got to realize too, you're going to have a set of garbage bins now directly facing the flanking street and directly facing the other house right at the property line. Where, you know, I would have liked to see them a little bit, you know, concealed within the site and also accessible to all of the, the units, just to ensure that it really works, right? I need to be convinced that this is, it can operate the way that it is proposed. Because to your submission, I, it's, it's hard to, you know, when you don't see things like, you know, walkways, places for storage, whether it be bicycle, garbage storage or bicycle parking, it's really hard to take a submission that, you know, these bikes are going to be stored directly on the grass. There's got to be some sort of structure or something. I mean, even if they're hung elevated, elevated up on the building, you'd still have to walk, you're still going to have to walk on the soft landscaping to access them. Again, not to say that they couldn't through form of soft landscaping, it doesn't necessarily have to be grass, it could be gravel. But, but, yeah, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's my main concern. And also the other thing is the setbacks. As I said, I think the building is pushed to all property lines. I, I think that, as I said, the, the revisions are making the application much more acceptable.
Yeah, much more.
I still have some concerns, but I haven't just made my decision yet, but these are my concerns. So I'd like to hear more from the other colleagues.
Okay, very good. Miss Sinker, Peralta, and Mr. Fazeli.
No, I, I agree with the points, Mr. Chair, that I've heard through you as well as Member Marziani. So.
No comment. Okay, Mr. Marziani, maybe I put you on the spot or Miss Sinker Peralta, we have, we have a motion, see where it goes. Okay.
Well, this is not an easy decision, but I think with the revisions, to me, I think it's an acceptable application, honestly. They've come a long way. I know the history and it's, I don't want to get that involved in my decision, but I'm looking at the variances that it, that are in front of us. And I think they made a good effort to make it more compliant with the bylaws. So I, I put forward a motion to approve this application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the application. I should ask as well, with your motion, are there any conditions that you'd like to put before I see if there's a second? As amended, yes, of course.
As amended, of course, as amended with the, with the revisions as outlined in the planning memo. And I don't see any condition from Member Forest Street, that's a separate thing.
Okay. Do I have a second or for the motion? Okay, Mr. Fazeli seconds that. All in favor? Okay, for the record, Mr. Allison will be opposed. So that motion carries, the application then is approved. Okay? The time is now twelve oh seven. Let's take a five-minute relief break and we will come back.
So, uh, before I, I'm not making any progress.
I think there's some conditions from planning was asking is, would you like to, would you like to include those uh recommendations from planning?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so the October sixteenth planning report.
Yeah, of course. Uh that's just substantially in accordance with the uh.
I'll make it subject to that report. Thank you.
All right, do I have a second by Mister Fazeli? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. That application is approved. All right, item number six. Twenty-five sixty-one Young Street. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing building by adding a rear second story addition. Requires three variances, one to reduce the number of accessible parking spaces, uh one for uh height and another for angular plane. Uh, okay. Uh on file, I see material from the applicant, uh memo from transportation and TTC. And oh, we have our agent in person. Welcome, sir. Uh please come down to the podium and state your name and address for us.
Hello?
There we go.
I um, thank you, Chairman and and the uh Committee Board. My name is Chris Lee. I'm from Urban Plax Architect. We are the agent uh representing the owner to to also the applicants to stay there. To present our case to to the board today.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they would like to hear a presentation from you?
Of course.
No, I think this is pretty straightforward. If it's all right with you, I I think we could take this into committee. Yes, okay.
Sure.
Let's go into committee. Oh, yes, Mister Marziani.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And through you, I think it's a straightforward application. Um it meets the four tests, so I'd I'd like to put forward a motion to approve. And I don't see any condition other than just the TTC standard condition, so.
We've, so we're adding the TTC? Do we usually add a TTC, the standard TTC as as approval? Um staff will just, if we need, we can pull that up.
Yes, so with inclusion of the TTC conditions.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, a motion to approve with the TTC conditions. I see that seconded by Miss Sankar Peralta. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. You have your approval, sir. Congratulations. Okay, item number seven, forty-three Mallow Road. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by constructing a new one-story front addition. And a two-story west side addition as well as a new front covered porch. Uh requesting three variances, front yard setback, front platform encroachment, and west side yard setback. On file, material from the applicant as well. We did receive a late staff report. We'll ask staff just to put that up on the screen. Uh, do we have our agent with us?
Uh, good afternoon, Mister Chairman. My name is Peter Latoschak of Latag Studio located at forty-seven hundred Loy Town Aurora Road in King.
Welcome. Uh sir, I just wanna confirm, uh, we had a late staff report come in from community planning. Have you had a chance to uh read that report?
Uh I have and I communicated with him on it, Mister Chair.
Okay, very good. I'll I'm gonna want to ask my colleagues whether or not they require a few, uh a full presentation. Um I I had just some questions, maybe we can just tone it in, uh just in the interest of time. Um I perhaps you could just provide a little bit of planning rationale uh with respect to the uh front porch uh extension into the front yard. Um, there's two variances, uh one related to the front yard setback and one uh for the porch, uh the platform encroachment.
Um absolutely, Mister Chairman. Um, just like it stated in the staff uh planning report. Basically, the front yard setback, um setbacks are related to the minor addition. Yeah, if you zoom in on there where it says proposed one-story addition. Uh the owners are looking to create a kind of an entry foyer into their current house. Uh that has not at the moment, you just uh purely enter right into the living room, pretty much. So the setback is essentially limited to that, that one-story addition. Um, and the side setback related to the garage is really related only to the small triangular area at the front of the garage before we do meet the one point eight meter setback as the lot is wedge shaped. Um, and I think the condition of the support that was stated in the um, the staff planning report, uh basically asked that if you do decide to approve this application, that you approve it substantially in accordance with the site plan. Uh, to ensure that these setbacks are not um sort of increased and and maybe potentially further uh future developments, which I'm totally in agreement with, like there, that's not what they're looking for. They're just looking to make a minor improvement, I guess, to their to their lives.
Okay, um, I should ask as well, um, would there be any concern, uh if approval was granted, would there be any concern uh tying to one of the side elevations, just to ensure that um in addition to the uh kinda area that that encroachment uh would be permitted, that it would also be limited uh to uh the the height uh that was uh drawn on the elevation?
I don't, I don't think that would be an issue, Mister Chairman, if you if you wish to do so.
Okay, I'm gonna ask my colleagues uh what they think, but um I I, before we go into committee, I just, I would like to ask, uh, do we have any?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move into committee. Yeah, I I I mean, I I think, uh maybe I gotta start it off. I think it's a good application. Uh it it's always nice to see um uh is a reappropriation of uh existing uh dwellings. Um, I you know, I I was, I was a little bit concerned uh with the the projection of the uh that that overhang, but um I I I'm satisfied with the applicant's submission. Uh you know, it is only, uh it does only pertain to a very small uh portion. Um, and it's, you know, I would also submit, it's it's, you know, limited uh in height uh through slight use of, you know, pitched pitched roof there, so. Any comments yet? Mister Fazeli, you wanna take it?
Yes, uh through you, Mister Chair, I agree with you and I I think it's a supportive application. So if there are no comments, I'm okay to forward a motion.
Sure.
Sankar, okay. Yes, I'd like to forward a motion to approve the application. I believe it's satisfied the four tests. I'd like to um include the conditions that are mentioned in the staff report as recommendations. Uh, do I need to read them?
I don't think so, no.
All right. Just the date is October twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, and we're satisfied with the site plan on its own? I think that.
I think it's.
Yeah, looking to Mister Marziani and uh Miss Sankar seems, I don't see any head shaking. Okay, all right, you wanna proceed?
Yes.
Uh, yes, okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval uh tied to the uh conditions noted in the community planning staff report. Do I have a second or for that motion, Mister Marziani, all in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item number eight, twenty-one, Whimpole Drive. The purpose of this application is to construct a detached garage. One variance uh related to the height of the proposed garage structure. On file, material from the applicant. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Trudy Tenorio. I'm the applicant and my address is seventy-seven Finch Avenue East.
All right.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask for a brief presentation from you. I realize we only have one variance, um but I would like, I would like a little bit more information uh on this, uh what you're asking for, uh what what uh what would require uh the the variance? Uh what what's facilitating the uh the variance uh here?
Uh, well, yes, so basically what we're asking for, it's going through to do the maximum permitted high of four meters to four point four meters in order to be able to accommodate a lift system inside the garage. Uh, this will help the current uh property owners to be able to have enough space inside of it, uh which their main concern is their security and their privacy. They have been um different type of, um, they had a suffer from, uh, I believe last year, someone tried to steal his car, and that's one of the reason why they wanna accommodate all these um cars inside the garage. Uh, the proposed garage is designed to accommodate a vehicle lift system, like I said, and this will enable uh the security and also maintain a tidy and uncluttered exterior in the property. Hello?
Yes, no, I'm listening, uh just taking in, taking in your submission. Um, okay, so uh i- is there no uh other secured parking uh on the property currently?
Uh, no, just the the driveway.
Uh just on the circular driveway, but nothing uh internalized?
Well, they do have internalized uh like a a garage.
They do have a garage, okay.
Yes, um but they do have more vehicles, and that's why there is not enough room for them to put them all inside that existing garage.
Okay, uh in addition to the uh garage, uh how many uh interior spaces does the main dwelling accommodate?
Uh, it has three.
Three, okay, so this would be an additional uh two spaces uh with with an additional uh uh lift system. Okay, and is that lift lift system is intended to accommodate uh one vehicle, two vehicles?
One vehicle more.
One vehicle more, okay. Questions? Okay. All right, um, looks like we can take this into committee?
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Miss Sankar Peralta.
Yeah, through you, Mister Chair. If no one has anything else to say, I I do believe that this application uh does meet the four tests. I'm not worried or concerned about it. I don't see anything uh coming out uh from any of our staff reports or community, um, you know, other extended, um, you know, staff uh submissions, so, um. And it is the one variance um that I'm, I find very minor. So I'm gonna put forward a motion to approve this application as is.
All right, do I have a second or Mister Fazeli? Okay, all in favor of that approval? Okay, that's unanimous. That application is approved.
Uh, thank you.
All right, we are uh moving along now. Uh, we're on item number nine. Twenty-three Ambrose Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition, a rear two-story addition, and a rear deck. Uh, also note that more than fifty percent of the existing uh buildings' main walls are being demolished. Uh, and that's why uh this uh application is being considered a new dwelling. We've got uh six variances before us, south side yard setback, north side yard setback, lot coverage, front and rear main wall heights, FSI and front yard setback. On file, material from the applicant as well as a late staff report. You have your agent or applicant with us?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Max and I'm the agent on behalf of the owner for twenty-three Ambrose Road.
All right, uh, I'm gonna ask, sir, I'm gonna ask for a brief presentation from you.
Sir, would you mind repeating that? Unfortunately.
Of course, I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna ask for a presentation from you.
Yes, not a problem.
Of course, uh staff will get the five uh minutes up and uh whenever you're ready.
Perfect, so we're proposing a couple of additions uh on this house. Pretty much, we talked to staff about this application. We're proposing to reduce uh two side yard setbacks uh from uh one point eight to one point twenty-six. Those setbacks are pretty much just a continuation of the existing setbacks of the bungalow. And it's just gonna appeal better when the house looks this way. Uh, also, variance number three, uh, oh, and by the way, variance number one, the number is a little bit incorrect here. It says one point twenty-six meters. When it, actually, it's one point twenty-four on the site line. I know it's not a big difference, but just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that.
I'm gonna interject there, so um so variance number one, uh relating to the south side yard setback on the public notice, it notes uh that you're requesting a variance of one point uh six, sorry, one point two-six meters where one point eight meters is required. And uh you're submitting that uh there's an error, uh and that you're act, you actually would require one point two four meters.
So this is what actually on the site plan and this is what actually on the zoning report.
Okay, uh first, is i- am I, am I correct in in the uh, just confirming that? Okay, so uh sir, I uh you know, if if you were modifying the variance, uh and it was becoming uh uh less um mo- more in accordance with the bylaw, we'd be able to make the modification, but if you're actually, if you're asking for a additional uh reduction on that uh variance, uh we would not be able to uh change that.
So I'm not actually asking for additional reduction. This was the original zoning review that was sent to planning.
I'm looking at the public. I'm looking at. Okay, did you, did you review the public hearing notice?
Uh, yes, I think currently.
Okay, and on the public hearing notice, it notes one point two-six meters.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
We can put the zoning view up. It says one point two-six.
Okay. So, um, I, we've got two, I got two options for you. Um, one is, uh we can, I can, I can ask my colleagues whether or not they would uh be inclined to permit a deferral of the application such that the to to permit that app, the public hearing notice to be recirculated with the correct information. Uh, or in the alternative, uh if we were to proceed today, uh we would have to proceed based off of the public notice, which shows one point two-six meters, so even if we wanted to, wouldn't be able to approve uh variance for one point two four meters. So that, that, you you just, it's just not possible, even if we wanted to, because it's not written on the public notice.
Yes, I'm not sure. I actually see the zoning notice that you have, but I also have a zoning notice in my documents. If you don't mind, give me a second to.
Sure, whatever, it doesn't, it it it, I'll I'll tell you now, it doesn't really matter what it says. Uh, because we have to go by the public hearing notice. That's what circulated to the public?
Mister Chair, both of our zoning notices say one point two-six. So this one and the previous one, both note one point two-six.
I think regardless of what the the zoning notice uh says, it is the a requirement of the applicant to confirm that the public notice that was prepared by the city and circulated uh is correct.
Uh, we're not gonna be able to continue with this committee because we're not able to approve something that is not there on site, number one. Uh, I guess we're gonna have to come back.
Yeah, I and I I I will, I'll put out there, I I do recognize we're talking about point zero-two meters. But even if it was point zero-one meters, like it it just, it's just there's no flexibility on that. Uh, and as Chair, I have to ensure that uh we're following the public notice.
Yeah, no, I I just, unfortunately, I just saw this morning looking into the documents and I saw that the site plan show a different number. If you, if you could pull out the.
So that's the second, that's the second, sorry, the first one. That's the first zoning view. So both the first zoning view and the subsequent zoning view both show one point two-six.
Okay.
Yeah, no, 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 I actually agree. I just pulled it out. It's just the, the mistake came in this zoning review, cause the site plan shows one point two-four. If you can pull out the site line, you would see that it says one point two-four on the site line.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, uh, like I noted, we can either, uh, we can proceed with the public notice, uh you could get up to one point two-six, or uh I could ask my colleagues whether or not uh they would support a deferral, and uh we can get you back here is uh on the next uh available date. Uh, we can recirculate that notice and uh make sure that all your ducks are in a row to proceed.
Mister Chair, may I, may I make my uh decision based on a question? I would like to ask a question. Is there, in in construction based on committee approvals? Is there a leniency? Cause if there is a leniency allowance of point two, of course, I would like to uh move on.
Of course, I I couldn't answer that, uh because I, you you also, if I did provide you an answer, I'd be taking some liability for it, but I eh my understanding is, and I say this with, you know, it limited, uh, just with caution. Uh, that would fall to the discretion of the building inspector. I personally, I wouldn't, I I would be I were building, I would wanna ensure that uh my drawings are up to date and correct, because if you do run into an issue down the road, you're gonna be back here and it's, it it could, it it could get you into a lot of, uh, could get you into a bit of trouble. The last thing we want is to uh have you back here, have a refusal, and then have something that was built torn down. Um, because somebody gave you the wrong information or told you that the point zero-two meters uh was insignificant.
Yes, yes.
All right.
The zoning, yeah, the zoning review was.
Yeah, I apologize. I I I really do. I try to uh help uh applicants along. Um, we we don't like to see these uh deferred, but sometimes uh it is out of our hands. Okay.
Okay, well, then, if the furl it is, the furl, is is that gonna be for the next meeting?
Uh, as soon as you're ready to go, uh you reach out to staff and they will, um, they'll they'll let you know when the next available uh time slot is.
So just as a, sorry.
Sure.
Mister Chair, this.
Yes.
As a, maybe to help the applicant out, he would be required to get a new zoning review if he wishes to proceed on a zoning review. So he can't be rescheduled until a new zoning review is obtained.
Okay.
Or he goes by way of waiver, which I wouldn't recommend.
Okay, did, is that understood?
No, no, I definitely understood.
Okay, good, good, good. Um, okay, all right, so uh I'm gonna take this into committee now. Um, colleagues, members, yes, Miss Sankar Peralta.
Yeah, through you, Mister Chair. Um, I think for judicial or procedural fairness, we need to defer this application. No matter how small uh that variance is, so I put forward a motion to defer this application. Signee die.
All right, I have a second or Mister Marziani, all in favor? Okay, that deferral request is approved. Uh, sir?
And that's to get a new zone, to to note the correct variant.
Yes, yes, uh that uh is to get a new zoning uh review done. Uh, or uh in the alternative, a waiver signed, um and so we can get you back here uh with the correct uh public notice uh in hand.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. So that wraps uh item number nine. Um, we are going back now to uh item number ten. Eighty-nine Ponce Avenue. The purpose of this application is to legalize and maintain the existing two-story detached dwelling. Two variances, uh building length and lot coverage. And uh on file material from the applicant. Uh, we have our applicant back.
Uh, yes, Andrew Trotter, eighty-one St. Clair and Zavvy, Toronto, Ontario.
All right, uh Mister Trotter, um, I've been advised by staff that we have uh an issue with uh the public notice, uh not the public notice, but the public, the pub- public notice, the uh sign, the posted sign, um getting out in time.
Yeah, the applicant's letter is on on the screen right now.
Yeah, we've we've just pulled up, staff have pulled your letter up on the uh screen. Um, it it would be very, um, I I'm not, you know, similar to the last application, I'm not sure how uh we would be able to proceed, uh given that the public, uh that the sign uh wasn't uh posted uh in accordance with the procedural rules.
Okay, well, I mean, if you, it's up to you. I mean, the thing is, I think, I mean, it's just, I understand that, um you know, the need for the public to have the uh the proper notice, it's just that the the variances are so tiny. It's the third time we've been to committee. Uh, there was a mistake on the survey. Um, the uh in closing the permit, seven years after the house has been built, there was a a note, there there was notice that there was a twelve-inch mistake in the existing building length. I mean, the house was built on the existing foundations, and um so I just felt like, considering it was like twelve inches added on to of like already from uh seventeen allowable seventeen point one-six to seventeen point four-six, and then less than one percent in uh coverage, I just felt it was so minor. I thought, you know what, maybe uh we could just get this through, but if if you feel that we need to come back because I was a a day and a half late on the sign posting, um then uh so be it, you know?
Yeah, fair enough. I'll I'll also just add, you know, um, this, because of our our Canada Post uh disruption, the po- the posting of the sign is like, it's absolutely, without a question, critical, because, right? Um, and you heard on the two, on the last file that we just dealt with, uh, we have to, you know, again, not it it's not really in my hands, but you know, that that item had to be deferred over point zero-two meters, which is even less than twelve inches, right? Uh, it's a fraction of that, so, um, I I understand where you're coming from, um but I I by no means want uh to have applicants tied up with the uh Committee of Adjustment and 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 I will say this, you know, as much work as it is for you as the applicant to, you know, come back here. You know, our staff also have to uh recirculate, uh drawings or committee members have to, uh whoever's assigned to that day has to familiarize familiarize themselves with that file, so there's a, there's quite a bit of prep on our end as well. Um, but but nonetheless, it is um, it is absolutely critical that um that procedure uh with respect to this, the posting of the sign is is followed accordingly, regardless of opposition, um, whether there's opposition or not. Um, so I hope you can understand. Um, if it's all right with you, I'll take this into committee and uh maybe we can get a deferral for you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh Mister Fazeli.
Yes.
Oh, uh, before, uh, let's take this into committee. Mister Fazeli.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. I agree with your explanation, and I think while um, um, there is no changes in request of the applications and merits for it, however, we need to, we must follow the uh appropriate procedural um accordingly, so for that reason, I'd like to defer the application. Um, that the uh applicant can follow those procedures accordingly.
Okay, I might even note, uh, if the applicant's unsure of the date, get it a day early, just you know, and confirm with staff that uh, or confirm the date, once you know, you have your hearing date, confirm the date and just confirm the procedure so that we're not back here again.
Yes.
Okay, uh Mister Marziani, looks like he's gonna second that motion. Uh, all in favor is, that's unanimous, so that deferral request is granted.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay, last item of our morning agenda, number eleven. Uh, address is one fifty-eight Albertus Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a three-story front addition, a two-story rear addition, and rebuild the existing front porch. On file, five variances, building depth, FSI, front porch encroachment into a front yard setback, dormer width and building length. On file, I have material from the applicant, uh ten letters in support. We have our agent with us.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Drew Laslow, agent for the owner. My address is one ninety-three Row Avenue.
Uh, Mister Laslow, welcome back to committee.
Thank you.
All right. Sir, I'm going to, uh, I'd like to ask my colleagues whether or not they would like a presentation from you. Yes, Mister Marziani?
I don't need a full presentation, just a uh brief explanation about the building length. I don't need a full presentation, just a, uh, brief explanation about the building length and building depth and depth and why do you need that, can you just, uh, address that, please?
Okay, so actually, I'm, I'm glad that was brought up because I would like to modify, slightly modify variance number one. And, and that has to do with the proposed building depth, I'd like that number to come down from 17.45 to go down to 17.09.
Okay.
Please, thank you. Uh, just with regards to kind of the depth, the, you know, in this area, the 14 meters is the, is, as, is as per the bylaw. We know in Toronto, typically throughout the majority of Toronto, the required or the minimum required depth and, or the depth is 19 meters and, and the building length is 17 meters. We just need a bit more length, this variance is unbelievably common, like to ask for 17 meters instead of the required for, I think, very, very common in this neck of the woods here, almost every house that, whenever any house on this street or in this area goes to committee of adjustment for one reason or another, that length and depth variance is, is on there, in every case, pretty well, I can say. Thank you.
And with that change to variance number one, variance two stays the same? Or it's just?
Yes, it does, I'm sorry, yes, it does, you know what, the, the actual extra, um, value in that proposed depth of variance number one, that was really just a typo. So the drawings that are on file actually reflect a depth of 17.09 already.
Okay, okay, and the building length is, uh, correct then at 16.99 meters?
Correct.
All right, thank you for that. Other questions for Mr. Lazlo? All right. Okay, it looks like we could, uh, yes, Mr. Marziani?
No, I just wanna, are, are we in committee or not?
Oh, I will take us there, yeah, um, okay, uh, let's go into committee. Yeah, please, Mr. Marziani?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think it's a supportable application, I don't have any concern and I think it meets the four tests. I had a bit of concern with the building length, which I think is aligned with the, the other proposal in the city, about 17 meters, so I'd like to put forward a motion to approve this application and I don't see any condition.
All right, uh, we have a motion by Mr. Marziani, uh, second by Mr. Fazeli, all in favor, that is unanimous, that application is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, okay, the time is now 12:54, uh, we wrapped our morning session a few minutes early. Uh, we will be back to start our afternoon session at 2:00 PM sharp. Thank you, everybody, we will see you soon.